Well, good evening. I'm always somewhat amazed at how many people show up to study on a Friday or Sunday afternoon, Friday afternoon too. But I know it's a short turnaround for you from worship this morning to probably lunch and not much time then, maybe a brief nap for some of you, some of us, and then right back here today. But I look forward to this so much and it always, I always think, I try to, you know, everybody says, "Enjoy the moment." Enjoy the moment. So here it is, first session on Sunday. I look forward to this all year. I want to enjoy the moment because I'll be standing either, I guess here on Wednesday night, a good Wednesday night I'll be in here, and I'll be saying, "I can't believe the Sunday through Wednesdays passed." But that's how it comes and goes. And I so I want to appreciate every opportunity to shake your hand and talk to you a little bit before or after, and I've already been able to do that, and so I just appreciate it so much. And so to Dr. Rummage who ultimately would want to have me or I wouldn't be here, I express my appreciation for having me, and to Ray for the invitation. Where'd Ray go? Now I can't find Ray. Where'd you go, Ray?
He went over there.
He is, he's handing out. Ray, appreciation for the invitation, thank you. And so this year it is "The Character of God in the Psalms." And so we're going to do an introduction to the Psalms tonight. In fact, if you want to look at the handout there, we'll just take a 30,000-foot view of things, kind of where we're going. So we're gonna, we're going to, I gave you quite a bit of notes on the introductory part because that's what we're gonna do this first hour. There's lots I wanted to say about the Psalms, and I won't be able to say everything I'd like to, so I put more notes there because I wanted you to, that's the part of it that you might not have the opportunity to study. You can go read the Psalms, which I would recommend highly. But the background, some of the background information is the kind of information that might not be so readily available to you, and I think it helps us think about the collection as 150 Psalms. So we're gonna spend the first session doing that. So that'll be the first two pages. Then you go to page three. This first, if you, the title is "The Character of God in the Psalms" for the whole study. So if you look, I've got then a session marked off for one today. So the second session this afternoon will be "The God Who Suffers For and With His People." So the, sort of the question we're asking is, what do we learn about the character and the nature and the attributes of God from the Psalms? What makes the God that we worship, the God that we claim, that we've come to know in Christ? What makes this God different from other so-called gods? What do we learn about this God from the Psalms? The songs and prayers of Israel's history? And so the first thing we're gonna talk about is, this God that we worship is a God who suffers for us and who also suffers with us. And we'll look at Psalms 22, Psalm 22 primarily, a little bit of Psalm 23. Then tomorrow night, you see the bottom of page three, Romans numeral two, "The Goodness of God in the Shadow of Darkness." What, excuse me, no, that's, that's still today. Look to the next page, page four. Romans numeral two, "The God Who Forgives." That's what we'll do tomorrow night. So we'll look at Psalm 32, Psalm 51. These are called penitential Psalms. They're Psalms of repentance. So we'll talk about, on the one hand, God's loving kindness, God's covenant faithfulness, and God's desire to forgive, and the forgiveness that He offers us. So "The God Who Forgives," that will be tomorrow night. Then Tuesday night, is that right? Yep. "The God Who Can Be Trusted in the Darkness," Romans numeral three. We'll look at two Psalms of lament. The majority of the Psalms are lament Psalms. There are more Psalms where people are crying out in agony, sadness, frequently David, but not only David, crying out in pandemics and physical suffering and the loss of loved ones and all sorts of pain that you can imagine. You see the psalmists crying out, lamenting to God. So that will be Tuesday night, Psalm 39 and 137. And then Wednesday night, the back page, praising God for His faithfulness. This God that we, that we worship is a God who's worthy to be worshipped. And so five Psalms, we won't cover all of them in detail on Wednesday night. We'll probably cover two of them maybe in detail. So this is what we're gonna, we're going to learn from God, from the Psalms. So that's kind of the direction that we're going. So this first session is going to be an introduction to the Psalms. So I'm gonna ask a prayer over us, and then we will begin. Our Father, we are so grateful that you have gathered us together for this year, for this Bible study. I thank you for these, your people. I thank you for the way that they have welcomed me into their church, into their community of faith over the years, and for the blessing that they've been in my life. I pray that now the study that I'm able to do with them will in return be a blessing to them. And I pray that the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart will be pleasing to you, oh Lord, my rock and my redeemer. Amen. So let's talk about the Psalms just in a general way, about the collection itself and what we might learn about the individual Psalms as we look at the Psalms as a whole. So here's my introduction. The Book of Psalms is a collection of 150 poems, songs, and prayers that comes from the life of Israel. It's, in some ways, it's Israel's Songbook. It covers a period of about 600 years at least. If you start with the life of David, and 73 of the Psalms are attributed to David, so that's a good place to start when you're thinking about, you know, what's that, what period in Israel's life do the Psalms cover? So if you start with David, David's reign is like 1,010 B.C. through 970 or something like that, about a 40-year reign. So let's just round that to 1,000, just to make math simple. So if you start with about 1,000 and, and you see David and his singing and his lamenting, now there's one song of Moses, there's a couple of songs of Solomon, and those certainly look back earlier, but for the, for the most part, let's start with 1,000 B.C. And then you have songs that run all the way through Israel's history from 1,000 B.C. through being carried away into captivity, through being attacked by oppressors, and finally returning to the land after the Babylonian captivity and rebuilding their temple. So the Psalms begin before there's a temple. Through the time then of Solomon and the rebuilding, and the building of the temple originally, it's being torn down by the Babylonians. They're returning to the land, rebuilding the temple. All this period is being covered in the Psalms, in the Songs of Israel. And they rebuild the temple in 515 B.C. So if you, if you want to think from 1,000 B.C., David's rule, through to the rebuilding of the temple after the Babylonians had destroyed it in 515 B.C., and then there are songs even after that. So we cover past 515 B.C. So we've got about 600 years of Israel's experiences recorded through these Psalms, songs, and prayers. 73 of them are attributed to David. Now if you look at your Psalm book, your Bible, and you start looking at the Psalms, you're gonna see titles. And sometimes it'll say, it'll have words, they're musical terms, Israelite musical terminology that we don't fully understand what all these words meant, like a mascol or selah. There's these kinds of musical terms that, that we're not 100% sure what some of those mean. But more importantly, you see like a Psalm of David. So you see David's name over 73 of the Psalms. Those are titles, superscriptions, that were added later than the actual Psalm. David didn't write a Psalm and at the top put "A Psalm of Me." So I don't see the titles bearing the same inspiration as the Psalms themselves, however, I rarely find any reason, in fact, I don't find any reason in any of the Psalms to question whether or not the title accurately reflects whether it's a Psalm of David or not. So I'm generally gonna go with the title. And so if it says "A Psalm of David," I'm going to think about what might have been happening in David's life that we know of that might have given rise to this kind of Psalm, whether it's joy, praise, thanksgiving, or lament. So 73 of these Psalms are attributed to David. He's referred to at the end of 2 Samuel, 2 Samuel, chapter 23, as "the sweet psalmist or singer of Israel." You know, he plays a harp for a liar. It makes sense that he would be the person most responsible for contributing Psalms. But there are other Psalms. In fact, there are Psalms attributed to Asaph, who is a Levite. He's a musician in David's court, and he has 12 Psalms attributed to Asaph. There are 11 Psalms attributed to the sons of Korah. Now if you're just reading along, maybe reading your Bible through in a year, or maybe just want to read some Psalms, maybe just flip your Bible open, and there's a Psalm, and at the top it says "Songs of Korah." You probably think, "Well, I bet Korah was a great musician in, you know, David's court or Solomon's court or something, and probably a wonderful man." No, he wasn't. He's infamous. In fact, if you look in Numbers, chapter 16, Korah challenged Moses and Aaron's leadership, and as a result of that, and he had about 250 people with him. As a result of that, it's a long and winding tale, but you can read Numbers 16 and see it, "The ground opens up and swallows them." He and his whole household. But apparently, some of his household survived because the sons of Korah. It's not, there are no songs of Korah. It's the sons of Korah that are attributed to, with 11 of these songs. So that's interesting. Obviously, musical family. And he was a Levite as well. And so the sons of Korah, who were some, in some way worship leaders, are attributed 11 of the Psalms. Then there's a couple of other odd ones, like there's a, the two Ezraites are attributed to other Psalms, which I'm not even gonna worry about. One, Moses, and two, Solomon. So if you're doing your math, how many is he mentioned? That leaves us with about 49 that are anonymous, that have no attribution of who the author might be. So we're, in most cases, we're in a little bit of the dark about what was the situation that gave rise to that particular song. So what do these Psalms do? They reflect the gamut of life experience. And as you know, you think about that period I just named, between David and the rebuilding of the temple and beyond, so into the fourth century B.C., you think about that experience of Israel and the experiences they had through that period of time. I mean, we're, it's a lot of lamenting, a lot of pain, a lot of suffering, a lot of joy, and a lot of thanksgiving. And what the Psalms do for us is reflect the broad sweep of all of our life experiences. And so although we might open there, you might not even notice the title above it, you really don't have to. And if you just start reading the Psalms, you're going to find experiences recounted there that resonate with the experiences you might be having at any given time. And if you think about all that Israel went through in that, through the Assyrian invasion of the northern kingdom, the Babylonian invasion of the southern kingdom in 586, carried away into captivity for roughly 70 years, finally able to return back to their homeland, able to rebuild their temple, but life is still hard. I mean, they go through so much. Think about the reign of David and all the ups and downs. I mean, Israel's greatest king, right? I mean, if you're ranking Israel's kings, you know, we rank presidents, who the greatest president. Well, if you were ranking Israel's greatest kings, David's gotta be, you know, right there at the top. And yet, his administration was marked by adultery, murder, deception, and, and as he endured these moments, the nation endured those moments. At times, not only did he let God down, he let his people down, the people of Israel. So you go through these experiences in life of ups and downs, highs and lows, suffering, joy, and that's precisely what we find in the Psalms, the full gamut of human experience. Don't we like to say the Bible is a book for all our lives? Well, if it's gonna be that, then it has to reflect the full experiences of our lives. And it does. We get the full gamut of human experience in the Psalms. So we're gonna, we're gonna hear Psalms of praise and thanksgiving. We're gonna hear laments. We're gonna hear individual laments where the person says, "Nobody loves me except my mother, and she might be jiving me too." Now, that's a B.B. King song, but it's a beautiful blues. I'm gonna refer to singing the blues, but yeah, how about that? "Nobody loves me except, but my mother, and she might be jiving me too." I think that reflects pretty well the, the, the sort of the lamenting, the kinds of lows that you're gonna hear in the Psalms. And then, on the other hand, you can just have some of the highest moments of praise and thanksgiving to God, where God has delivered someone out of their, out of their horrible situation, or just a recognition that God is the Creator of all things, so let everything in the sky and let everything on earth give praise. Let everything that has breath praise the Lord. So we can go from, "I feel like a worm, subhuman, and I don't have any friends, and my enemies are about to get me," all the way up to "Let everything that has breath praise the Lord." Now that's a book for our lives, because that's the way our lives go. Even those who are, feel the most blessed in life, who may have, who may have somehow avoided a lot of the turmoil and sickness in their family, even, even those families will experience suffering and death and pain. And so the Psalms is a book for our lives because it reflects the full experience, the full gamut of human experience. So you might know this, but it's the most read portion of the Old Testament. The Psalms are the most popular portion of the Old Testament, particularly among Christians. We like the Psalms. And one of the ways that I discovered this early on, I didn't do any research, I just realized it, I used to carry just a thin little Bible that was just the New Testament, but it also included the Psalms. Any of you ever had, have a New Testament that also had the Psalms attached? Well, think about what canonically. Now I don't do that anymore, even though I'm a New Testament guy, but it sort of felt bad about that, that it looked like maybe I thought the Old Testament wasn't on par. It wasn't Scripture in the same way the New Testament was, and I didn't want to, you know, I deal with young people, 18 to 22. They're impressionable minds. I don't want to lead them astray. I don't want to carry just a New Testament and make them think, you know, maybe the Old Testament's not Scripture also. So I'm gonna affirm the whole canon that I've got sitting there on my shelf, two or three, just a New Testament and Psalms attached. Now what's that say? Says, "We like the New Testament, and if we gotta pick something, the Old Testament, we'll take the Psalms." And I understand that, and I'm not really not gonna criticize it, but just ask, why are they so popular? Why do Christians find the Psalms so appealing? And my first answer is a no-brainer. I don't, I shouldn't even have to say it, but I'll go ahead and say it anyway. It's because the Psalms are Scripture. And you think about a passage like 2 Timothy 3, 6, and 7, 3, 16, 17, "All Scripture is God-breathed, breathed out by God, and as a result of that, it is profitable for teaching, for conviction, for correction, for training in righteousness, so that you, every one of you, might be equipped, fully equipped, for every good work." That's the work of Scripture, and the Psalms are Scripture. They are God-breathed. And so when we read them, when we meditate on them, when we take four days to study them, it gives us the opportunity to be shaped and formed by them. And that's how they equip us. I think it's great if you have Psalms memorized. I mean, I think it'd be great if you had all 150 memorized, not, not thinking there's very many gonna say, "Yeah, I got them." Maybe you got the 23rd Psalm, or you know, one here or there that for whatever reason was important to you. Some people memorize better than others. And I find as I get older, it's harder for me to memorize than when I was 20. 56 is tougher than 20 to memorize things. So I'm not gonna tell you, if you're not memorizing the Psalms, they can't change your life. I'm saying if you will meditate on them, if you, which requires you reading them, if you read them, if you meditate on them, if you study them, God's Word will do its work in you. It will shape you, it will transform you, it will equip you in that way, whether you can specifically recall the words of a Psalm when you need it or not. It just shapes you into a certain kind of person, a person of wisdom, a person who desires to follow God's way and God's will. That's what all Scripture has the ability to do for us. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to study these in preparation to teach and then to study them again here with you, because every time we read them, every time we meditate on them, we have the opportunity to be shaped more in the way that God desires us to be. Scripture, that's part of the appeal for us. Another thing though, it's, I would point to the uniqueness of the Psalms as something that is appealing to us. Now I've said they're God-breathed, that is, God breathed them out, right? The words of the Psalms are in some sense, God's word breathed out to us, but they're different than any other genre in Scripture. If you think about the law, think about how the law was given, right? You want to talk about God just writing it down and handing it to Moses? I mean, that's, I don't know how you understand inspiration, how God inspired these words, but that, that's dictation. Even more than that, just handing it to Moses. Here they are. Now that's God giving His word, His direction, His instructions to Moses, who then gives it to the people. But the flow is from God to us, right? And you think about the same with the prophets. God is giving the words to the prophet, and the prophet is teaching the people. So the flow is from God down through, whether it's Moses, or whether it's Isaiah, or Jeremiah, or Ezekiel, it's God giving the word to the prophet, and the prophet giving it to the people. It's that, that's the flow. Even in the New Testament, you think about Jesus' teaching, you think about Paul writing letters. It's God inspiring the one who speaks, and then the word coming to the people. But think about the Psalms. What's the direction of the flow there? These are genuine, real people, David in, you know, 73 cases, Asaph, sons of Korah, Solomon, Moses, and they are expressing their emotions to God. So now the flow is not from God to us like that, it's from human beings to God. They're crying out, sometimes with joy and thanksgiving. "Let everything that has breath praise the Lord. Let everyone praise the Lord." And sometimes they're shaking their fist at God. They're angry, or they're shaking their fist at their enemies and asking God to knock their teeth out. Now that flow is from real, live human beings who are part of Israel, and in some cases, the nation, like a national lament or a national thanksgiving, and they're expressing themselves to God. So the flow is the opposite direction. These are people expressing themselves to God, and yet, it's God-breathed Scripture. And it's real emotion being expressed. These aren't people who are just, you know, emotionless, and God's riling them up so they'll say words that He wants them to say, so we'll have them. Somehow the inspiration's more complicated than that. He's inspiring these people, but they're expressing their genuine emotion, and yet it's God-breathed Scripture. So what does it do? Why do we, why is that appealing to us? Because we see how we can express ourselves to God in similar situations. They are instruments for us to see, "How do I pray when I don't feel like praying? How do I sing when I don't feel like singing? How do I express when I'm overcome with thanksgiving to God? When my words seem inadequate? When I'm not so eloquent?" You can go to the Psalms and find some of the most eloquent thanksgiving expressions to God, and you can just pray that Psalm. Or on the other hand, you may be having a difficult time finding the words to express your agony. So you might cry out in a given moment, "My God, my God, why have you forsaken me?" And you say, "Yep, that's the words I'm looking for." That's Psalm 22:1. If you thought that was Jesus, you were right, because Jesus quoted Psalm 22:1 in the only saying from the cross in Matthew and Mark. He used the words of the psalmist to express that moment and the emotion of it. Well, what would Jesus do? He'd go to the Psalms to express His emotion in the moment. That's what we should do. And you might read some of these laments and think, "Man, I think that person's lost their faith." No. If they're still crying out to God, they've not lost their faith, and they've, they've not given up on God. They're just expressing their genuine, true emotion. And that doesn't mean you've given up on God or lost your faith. That just means your situation is so hard, so bleak, the circumstances are so difficult that you just don't know what to do or what to say. The Psalms will help us. So I think that's appealing to us, to see people in every experience of life and how they're expressing themselves to God, and they help us do the same in those moments. I would think about it this way. The Psalms represent an ongoing dialogue between human beings and God about the most important aspects of life. Not only does God speak to us in the Psalms, but He provides a way for us to speak to Him. We learn how to speak to God in every experience of life. No other genre of Scripture does that. So when we think about the types of Psalms we'll find, I've already referred to them, but there's hymns of praise. Now you might think that's most of them, but it's not. But, but there's a large number of Psalms that are hymns of praise to God. You'll find these by "Praise the Lord." Often the Psalm will begin, "Praise the Lord," sometimes end, "Praise the Lord." But it's a call to praise the Lord. Look at Psalm 8. We're actually gonna look at some Psalms as we do the introduction. A hymn of praise. "Lord our Lord, how majestic is your name in all the earth! You have set your glory in the heavens. Through the praise of children and infants you have established a stronghold against your enemies, to silence the foe and the avenger. When I consider your heavens, the work of your fingers, the moon and the stars which you've set into place, what is the son of, the son of man that you are mindful of him? Human beings that you care for them. You've made him a little lower than the angels and crowned him with glory and honor. You made him ruler over the works of your hands. You put everything under his feet. All flocks and herds and animals of the wild, the birds in the sky and the fish in the sea, all that swim the paths of the sea. Lord our Lord, how majestic is your name in all the earth?" Doesn't that feel good? Now I could've called on any of you to sort of, at the moment, express praise to God, and I'm sure you could've done it beautifully, but could you have done it that beautifully? "Oh Lord our Lord, how majestic is your name in all the earth." Just that line. We can pray that, we can sing that. It doesn't only show us how, we can actually say, pray, sing those words, express them to God. And then there are Psalms of thanksgiving. So we have hymns of praise, Psalms of thanksgiving. Now the, the praise Psalms and the thanksgiving Psalms sometimes sort of bleed over into each other, but when I, when I think about a Psalm of thanksgiving, I'm thinking about where the psalmist is thanking God for deliverance, or for blessing, or for something that has happened in their life. And they see God as the one who has blessed them. God is the one who has poured out for them, and so they thank God for it. So you're often gonna hear about some things that weren't right, but that have been made right, or enemies that have been defeated, or sickness that has been healed. Or sickness that has been healed. And it's just an expression of thanksgiving to God. So, look at 18, Psalm 18. And I've just sort of randomly selected some of these that I think demonstrate it well. So, Psalm 18. "I love you, Lord, my strength. The Lord is my rock, my fortress, my deliverer. My God is my rock, in whom I take refuge, my shield and the horn of my salvation, my stronghold. I call to the Lord, who is worthy of praise, and I have been saved from my enemies." Now, we're going to get laments where the person is currently being pursued by their enemies. And they don't see any way they're going to be able to avoid being trapped and caught and maybe killed by their enemies. But not here. God has delivered them, or this person, from His enemies. And so, He's thanking God. Look at verse 13, just skip over to 13. "The Lord thundered from heaven; the voice of the Most High resounded. He shot his arrows and scattered the enemy with great bolts of lightning; he routed them. The valleys of the sea were exposed, and the foundations of the earth laid bare at your rebuke, Lord, at the blast of breath from your nostrils. He reached down from on high and took hold of me and drew me out of the deep waters. He rescued me from my powerful enemy, from my foes, who were too strong for me. They confronted me in the day of my disaster, but the Lord was my support. He brought me out into a spacious place; he rescued me because he delighted in me." Can you feel the gratitude, the thanksgiving in that? Now, there's reason just to praise God. The Maker of heaven and earth. There's reasons just to, for no reason, just to praise God, no reason in our own lives. But these thanksgiving hymns are expressions of gratitude to God because He has delivered them from some disaster, from some hardship. So, we have hymns of praise. We have Psalms of thanksgiving. And I could point to community praise and community thanksgiving. Sometimes, it's the people as a whole, I've focused on individuals. The third type of Psalm that we're going to see, they are laments. And I've already mentioned them. Sixty-plus of the Psalms are laments. That's the highest percentage of any type. They are laments. These Psalms express deep and profound response to God in the midst of suffering, hardship, and great need. So, let's look at an individual lament. Look at Psalm 3. I think this is really, Psalm 3 is the first Psalm. You've got, I think, 1 and 2 is kind of an introduction to the Psalms, Psalm 1 and 2. Psalm 3 really is your first expression. And it's a lament. "Lord, how many are my foes? How many rise up against me? Many are saying of me, 'God will not deliver him.' But you, Lord, are a shield around me, my glory, the one who lifts my head high. I call out to the Lord, and he answers me from his holy mountain. I lie down and sleep; I will wake again, because the Lord sustains me. I will not fear, though tens of thousands assail me on every side. Arise, Lord, deliver me, my God. Strike all my enemies on the jaw; break the teeth of the wicked. May the Lord, from the Lord comes deliverance; may your blessing be on your people." You hear the lament in that? See, the person's not yet delivered out of the horrible situation there. They're believing in God, they're expressing confidence in God, but the enemies are mounting. They're in distress. And that is a classic lament. And it looks like an individual lamenting about some difficult situation. Now, Psalm 137 would be a communal lament. And I'm going to spend a little more time on this in one of the evenings. So, I'm not going to do much, but there's no title to it. It doesn't tell you who's singing, it doesn't tell you what the historical situation is, Psalm 137. But you're going to know almost immediately. Psalm 137:1. "By the rivers of Babylon we sat and wept, when we remembered Zion." By the rivers of Babylon. We just fell down and cried because we missed home. We missed Zion. We missed Jerusalem. You don't have to have a title. This is the cry of the people of Israel who'd been carried into exile in the Babylonian captivity. And I don't have to tell you how awful an enemy siege like the Babylonians carried out on Jerusalem, where they tore down the walls of the city and they destroyed the temple, when a enemy assailant has to tear down the walls of a city to get in. Once they've done that, I don't have to tell you how violent and how brutal that attack would be. How many people would die? How many women would be raped? How many children would be just stepped on, destroyed, killed, on the spot? How many families destroyed? So, I'll skip to the end of it. Verse 8. "Daughter Babylon, doomed to destruction; blessed is the one who repays you according to what you've done to us. Blessed is the one who seizes your infants and dashes their heads against the rocks." Wow. I mean, that almost takes your breath away. The call for revenge. You shouldn't feel that way. But what if you do? Well, here's an example of what to do if you feel that way. You cry out to God. We'll return to that one. It's worth a little more time. So, we have both personal and community laments, the people of God, as a people, lamenting to God. By the way, that calling for God to like knock their teeth out or bash their babies' heads against the rocks, those are called imprecatory Psalms. That's a word for curses. Where the person is asking God to carry out some curse on their enemies. Now, you know, Jesus would say, "You shouldn't ask for curses on your enemies. You should bless those who curse you." But Jesus knew as well as you do that you're sometimes going to wish curses on your enemies. Depending on your situation, you might wish God'd get even for you or do something terrible to these people who are causing you so much pain. And you've got to remember what they had been facing. But when you do feel that way, what do you do? Not a question of whether you should or not. What happens when you do feel that way? We'll come back to that. Then, there are royal Psalms, Psalms that have to do with the king, the coming king, the coming messianic kingdom. They're royal, they have to do with the king. So, look at Psalm 2. "Why do the nations conspire, and the peoples plot in vain? The kings of the earth rise up, and the rulers band together against the Lord and against his anointed saying. Let us break their chains and throw off their shackles. The one enthroned in heaven laughs; the Lord scoffs at them." Verse 8. "Ask me, and I will make the nations your inheritance, the ends of the earth your possession. You will break them with a rod of iron." Now, that's talking about the king. "With a rod or a scepter of iron, you will dash them to pieces like pottery. Therefore, you kings be wise; be warned, you rulers of the earth. Serve the Lord with fear, and celebrate his rule with trembling. Kiss his son, or he will be angry, and your way will lead you to destruction; for his wrath can flare up in a moment. Blessed are all who take refuge in him." It's a song about kings and the king. And so, we've got a sizable number of Psalms that have to do with the king, or the coming king. Then, there are wisdom Psalms. These often have to do with God's law and obeying God's law. So, we've got hymns of praise, we've got thanksgiving hymns. We've got laments. We've got royal Psalms. And now, I'm saying there are wisdom Psalms. Look at Psalm 1. "Blessed is the one who does not walk in the way of the wicked, or stand in the way that sinners take, or sit in the company of mockers, but whose delight is in the law of the Lord, and who meditates on his law day and night." This is how to gain wisdom, how to gain knowledge. You meditate on God's law. You think about a Psalm like Psalm 119. It is 176 verses. The longest Psalm by far. 176 verses of celebration of God's law. And just about every verse has a reference to God's law. And it uses, it's like the Psalmist got the thesaurus out and found every possible synonym for law. Talk about God's decrees, God's statutes, God's teaching, God's instruction, God's Torah, God's law. And it's a celebration of it, that it's good. That would be a wisdom Psalm. And then, there's a section, Psalm 120 through 134, that are called Songs of Ascent. You know, Jerusalem sits on a hill, it's up to Jerusalem from anywhere. And so, when Jewish pilgrims coming for the, there were three festivals on the Jewish yearly calendar, where Israelites, wherever they lived in the empire, they tried to get back to Jerusalem for the festival. Passover was one of those. Pentecost was another. Tabernacles or booths is the third. So, those three festivals, everybody's trying to go back to Jerusalem for the festival. And so, as, songs that Israelites would sing as they're approaching the Holy City. Songs of ascent. And that's, there's a whole section of them in 120 through 134. So, back to, what's he talking about? Why are they so appealing to us? Why are they so popular? Why would we take only the Psalms and add it to a New Testament and make that something we'd want to carry around? Well, they're Scripture. They're God's Word, God-breathed, with the power to transform our lives. But also, they are unlike any other part of Scripture because they express emotion to God. The full gamut of emotion is expressed to God. Lament, or thanksgiving, or praise. And we identify with all those emotions, we identify with all those experiences. And it provides us an instrument so that we might know how to express ourselves to God in those moments. And the final thing I would say about why I think they're appealing to us is because they point us to Christ. And I would say this about any part of Scripture. Not just the New Testament, but the Old Testament also. It all points us to Jesus. Jesus is the unifying thread that ties the Old and the New Testament together. If you don't have a picture of Jesus in your mind when you're taking all the pieces of Scripture and trying to fit them together, then your puzzle won't fit. If you take all the disparate pieces of Scripture, whether it's from Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy, whether it's from some part of the writings, Samuel, Kings, or Chronicles, whether it's a part of the Psalms, whether it's from the prophets, Job, or any New Testament writing. You take verses out of any of those books and you think of it like a piece of a puzzle. And you're trying to figure out how this piece fits into the whole. Have you ever tried to work a puzzle without a picture of what the puzzle looks like? That's what you're trying to do. If you don't have your mind focused on the risen Lord, Jesus, Messiah, King. If you don't have that as like what you look at when you're trying to put the pieces together, they won't fit. And you will make something else out of those pieces, other than what God intended them to be. We sort of call that not having the right context, taking Scripture out of its original context. Well, maybe not thought of taking stuff out of context this way, but for me, it's maybe the most destructive way. If you're just trying to take the pieces and fit them into your puzzle without the picture of Christ as what you're trying to piece together, you can't make sense of the pieces. You will distort the puzzle. So, when we read the Psalms, they should point us to Jesus. And they do. And one of the ways I know that, aside from what I just stated, that's what I believe about how you should read Scripture, that if you don't have Jesus in mind, you can't read this well. You can't, you're not going to, you're not going to see it rightly. That's why I would say, you know, you could go to OU or OSU and find a scholar there who's an expert in, you know, Greco-Roman history or ancient Mediterranean history, and they might, they might have studied biblical Hebrew. You know, lots of people study it just academically. They don't, they don't believe that Jesus is Messiah. Or somebody who's had Greek at maybe a world-class institution. And so, they know the historical background, they know the biblical languages, they can read this, the Bible in its original language, in its original context. Do I think they can be good interpreters of Scripture? Because they're not seeing the puzzle right. They don't know what they're piecing together. You've got to see Jesus in order to fit the pieces rightly together. They all fit together in a way that points to Him. So, He's the handsome King. That's the picture you're trying to piece together. If you're not looking at that, you'll end up with a dog. Or a cat. Or a hill. Or something that's misformed. So, that's what I believe. Now, what do I know? I can look at the New Testament and see New Testament writers and speakers using the Psalms in order to point to Jesus. Jesus Himself. Psalm 118:22 and 23 says, "The stone that the builders rejected has become the cornerstone; this is the Lord's doing, and it is marvelous in his eyes." It's just a line in a Psalm. Now, if you don't know anything about Jesus, what are you going to do with that? You're not going to have any idea what to do with that. But Jesus quotes that in Matthew, Mark, and Luke in the same context. He quotes it when he's telling a parable, and it's the way Jesus is describing why the religious leaders have rejected Him. They are the rejectors, and He is the chief cornerstone. That Psalm points to Jesus. If you're not looking at Jesus, the handsome King, when you're piecing that Psalm together, you won't know what to do with it. You won't know who it's pointing to. You'll put it in the wrong place. You'll make a dog instead of the handsome King. And that Psalm is also used in Acts 4:11. Peter cites that Psalm in a sermon early in Acts as a way to point to Jesus and why He was crucified by the religious leaders. He was the chief cornerstone. And Jesus uses it to say, "They rejected me, that's why God is rejecting them." Where are they getting all that? From that Psalm 118:22 and 23. And then, just a little later, two verses later, Psalm 118:25. "Blessed is he who comes in the name of the Lord." That's what the pilgrims were singing when Jesus rides into Jerusalem on the donkey. They said, "That Psalm's pointing to Messiah, and there He is." The Psalms point to Jesus. That's something we Christians ought to be interested in. And then, in Jesus' greatest moment of suffering and agony, there are seven sayings from the cross. Two of them are quotes from the Psalms. He quotes the Psalms twice in two out of seven sayings from the cross. I've already said one, Psalm 22:1, "My God, my God, why have you forsaken me?" It's a quote from the Psalm. But you remember in Luke's Gospel when he says, "Into your hands I commit my spirit"? That's Psalm 31:5. Another lament. Two out of seven sayings from the cross, He cites a Psalm. They pointed to the experience He was enduring, and He quoted them. Peter does it in Acts, chapter 2, verse 36. Here's Peter's conclusion to his sermon at Pentecost. You know the Pentecost sermon? You know, they've spoken in tongues and some other weird stuff has happened, and they say, "These men are drunk." And Peter says, "No, no, no. Too early in the morning for that." And then, he preaches, because quite a crowd is gathered. That's what Peter typically does, if a crowd gathers, he'll preach. And here's sort of the last, here's the thesis statement of that sermon. "Let all Israel be assured of this; God has made this Jesus, whom you crucified, both Lord and Messiah." How about an amen for that? How about an amen for that? Is, that's a good sermon any day, right? That could be a Sunday morning sermon here at Quail Springs any week, that Jesus is, that God has made this Jesus, both Lord and Messiah. I say amen. You know where he got that idea? He quotes two Psalms. That's his biblical text. Now, Acts two thirty-six is our biblical text, but it wasn't his biblical text, it, it hadn't been written yet. So when he preached in Acts two thirty-six, what was the Bible? What was the biblical text? He used, he used two Psalms. The first one is Psalm one ten, one. The Lord said to my lord, sit here until I make your enemies a footstool for your feet. By the way, Psalm one ten's the most quoted Psalm and Old Testament passage in the New Testament. And then Psalm sixteen, eight through eleven, that he will not abandon his holy one to decay or to Hades. And Peter sees that as a reference to Jesus and the resurrection. And so from those two Psalms, as his biblical text, Peter says, God has made this Jesus both Lord and Messiah. Because the Psalms point to Jesus. Paul, there's a pretty good model there, too. Paul, in his first evangelistic sermon in Acts at Lystra, he, he uses two Psalms as his primary text there. One of them, I've just mentioned, the Psalm sixteen, ten, you will not abandon your holy one to decay. But also he uses Psalm two, seven, you are my son, today I have begotten you, says the Lord. To demonstrate that Jesus is the son of God. There's Paul using the Psalms in order to make his case about who Jesus is. The writer of Hebrews. In Hebrews, chapter one, he wants to make the case that Jesus is greater than angels. Nothing bad about angels. He's good with angels, angels are thumbs up. But Jesus is greater than angels. And he quotes a, a number of Old Testament passages, about eleven of them, but at least five of them are Psalms. And that's how he makes his case that Jesus is greater than angels by quite quoting the Psalms. He quotes the same Psalm two, seven that Paul just quoted. You are my son, today I have begotten you. He quotes Psalm forty-five, six and seven. You, your throne, oh God, is forever and ever. The scepter of your kingdom is a scepter of uprightness. You have loved righteousness and hated wickedness. Therefore, God, your God, has anointed you with the oil of gladness. Now, to which angels did he ever say that about? The writer of Hebrews says that was a Psalm talking about Jesus. Nothing like that was ever said about angels. Psalm one oh two, twenty-five through twenty-seven is quoted. Psalm one ten, one, again, to which of the angels did he ever say, sit at my right hand until I make your enemies my footstool? And as a result of those Psalms, the he, the writer of Hebrews declares, Jesus is greater than angels. Then Hebrews seven, you ever heard of mysterious character Melchizedek? You know, he's a priest in just a one little scene in Genesis fourteen, but he shows up in a Psalm. He shows up in Psalm one ten, four. I told you Psalm one ten's the most quoted passage in the New Testament, that, that Psalm. But verse four says, the Lord has sworn and will not change his mind, you are a priest forever after the order of Melchizedek. And Hebrews seven is like an extended meditation on Psalm one ten, four. And as a result of that meditation, you know what the writer of Hebrew declares? Jesus is greater than Melchizedek. He's a priest in the order of Melchizedek, but he's greater than Melchizedek. So what am I doing? I'm showing you how New Testament writers saw in the Psalms references to Jesus. It framed their theology. This is how they built their understanding, at least to some degree, about who Jesus is, from the Psalms. And then finally, appropriately, the book of Revelation. I've quoted Psalm two, seven twice already. Psalm two, nine is quoted twice in the book of Revelation. That this king will rule with a rod of iron. That passage is cited twice in the book of Revelation, in Revelation two, twenty-seven, and in Revelation twelve, five. That he will rule with an iron rod. And as a result of saying that the child born to this woman in Revelation, chapter twelve, is the Messiah, quoting this Psalm, because of that, the great dragon in Psalm twelve. Sounds like a bad dude to me. The great dat dragon. How about the ancient serpent? Does that sound pretty bad? Sounds pretty bad to me. As a result of the birth of this child who will rule with an iron rod. The great dragon, the ancient serpent, the devil, Satan, whatever term you want to use to refer, he's cast out of heaven, just like garbage, like rubbish, just heaved right out. And the ancient serpent, all these titles you want to, just laying on the ground like so much dirty laundry. Why? Because the king, God's Messiah, this child born to this woman will rule with a rod of iron. They didn't sing Christmas carols and give presents as a result of the birth of this child. There was war in heaven. But the bad dude is just heaved right out. Because Psalm nine. Like every other part of scripture, the Psalms point us to Christ. I think that's valuable for us as God's people. Well, it seems like an appropriate time for you to have a break.